A 4:00 PM work session or study session for the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners. I will let Sarah introduce a bit more and just quickly remind everybody that no action is taken during these work sessions, nor is any public comment taken. This is an opportunity to have a presentation and then discussion amongst commissioners and the presenters who are here with us. Sarah, do you have anything to add?
Basically, I'll just turn it over to Jill. I think she'll introduce the team and folks here.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Thanks for letting us have some time with you this afternoon and present the findings of the homelessness needs assessment. With the team from KU Center for Public Partnerships and Research. I'm going to let the members of that team introduce themselves and dive into the presentation in just a minute. I did just want to acknowledge that David Tucker is with us as well, our Regional Homelessness Coordinator, who's been a huge part of supporting the work that KU's done these past few months. And this group, the KU team that we've worked closely with and been in regular contact with, a group that we've started, we call the homelessness and housing stakeholders that meet monthly and talk through the mechanics of and the updates of this assessment. Also work with the team at Corporation for Supportive Housing to monitor the process of the work that Supportive Housing Needs Assessment. It was just always a check-in and feedback and making sure that the team was on track and had the support that they needed with all the relevant stakeholders that are in that group. So I wanted to just real quickly acknowledge or clarify that this is a needs assessment. There are going to be some recommendations you'll find in this if you don't hear today and in the final version that we'll receive in the coming weeks when the work is completed. But we did ask KU to perform a needs assessment for us. So that is the information that will be in the needs assessment is going to let us know what are our needs? What is the work that we need to do to craft a short and a long-term plan to address the homelessness issues that are in Lawrence, Douglas County? KU has a track record of doing this kind of work in the greater Kansas City area and we looked at that work before engaging in this process and we were really encouraged by what that, what this process could look like for Lawrence, Douglas County. And I've been really gratified to work with this team. And with that, I'm going to hand it off to Marion and let her dive into introducing the team and let them get going.
Sure. Well, hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having us today. We're so excited to share with you what we have learned through this process so far. My name is Marion Boyd. I am a Research Project Coordinator at the University of Kansas Center for Public Partnerships and Research. I have been with the center for three years and the summer I started in 2019, I was engaged in the Kansas City Needs Assessment work. Housing homelessness is, and preventing and reducing homelessness is something I'm very passionate about and I just feel so, so fortunate to be here with you all today. So thank you again. I will toss it to my teammate, Megan Chezick.
Thanks, Marion. Hi, everybody. I'm Megan Chezick. I'm an Assistant Director at KU Center for Public Partnerships and Research and have been a part of both needs assessments and I'm thrilled to be here with you today. I'm going to turn it over to Owen.
All right. Thank you, Megan. My name, as Megan said, is Owen Cox. I work for KU Center for Public Partnerships and Research. And I've been around here for approximately nine years now. I was also involved in the Kansas City work. Generally speaking, my role is an Associate Researcher Senior and I am heavily involved in our applied research team, applied research team at the center. And Silka, I'm going to see you around here as well.
Good afternoon. I'm Silka von Eisenwein. I am also Assistant Director at CPPR. And I'm the lead for the Applied Research Team and I'm really glad that we can share our preliminary findings with you.
All right. I think Jill, we're good to take it away now?
Yep, you should be able to share screen and go for it.
All right. Well, as I think Marion's going to pull that up for us, but as we get going, I want to make sure that I also mentioned that we had a bunch of other folks at our center that helped take part in this particular needs assessment. That includes Hui Zhao, who helped us with a lot of the quantitative sort of analysis for this research. And so I just wanted to mention her as well as our design team who's done great work with us. All right. So just going to jump into it. I am going to go try to go somewhat quickly so we can get to a sort of a robust question period for you all if you'd like to have that. And so we'll go through these slides fairly quickly, but I want to say first and foremost that I really appreciate Jill, David, and the entirety of the homelessness and the housing stakeholders group. They have really been instrumental in moving this work forward, helping us make the right connections to talk to the right providers in town, but also using those connections to connect us with individuals with lived experience, which has been a really important part of the research that we've done for this particular needs assessment. And as Jill said, it is a needs assessment. We're really hoping that what you see here today and what you see in the final report, which is forthcoming, will really help sort of guide any future sort of plans that you might make around sort of tackling some of the issues that the needs assessment has uncovered. And so understanding it's not a comprehensive plan, but it really is a way to sort of guide some of the actions that can be taken in the community to really hope, hopefully address homelessness and really sort of, you know, move toward that goal, sort of zero, zero individuals experiencing homelessness within the community. I think with that, Marion, if you want to go ahead and advance to the next slide, it's going to be another sort of brief one, just to talk a little bit about who we are and how we got here. And so we are the KU Center for Public Partnerships and Research. We have an overarching mission of optimizing the well-being of youth, children and families. And we sort of define that broadly, right? We really are looking for ways that we can help facilitate systems change to really understand and tackle important social issues and different aspects or problems that are occurring in the communities with which we work. And in particular, we're excited about this one because being at the University of Kansas, we are located in Lawrence and Douglas County. And so we're really excited to be able to do some work within our community for sure. As was mentioned, we did do a previous needs assessment with the Greater Kansas City Coalition to end homelessness and really looked at issues in both Wyandaw and Jackson County around homelessness and what that looked like for that particular COC. That work took place primarily in 2019, so right prior to the pandemic, which of course only exacerbated some of the problems that we were able to talk about with Kansas City. But we were really excited to take on this project as well to look at some of the issues around homelessness here in Lawrence and Douglas County. And as I said before, we have quite a bit more of a team than what is joining us here on this particular phone call. The center itself is made up of a multi-disciplinary team of approximately 80 full-time staff with a bunch of different backgrounds, but a lot of them in sort of social science and research. So we were able to sort of lean on the experience of a bunch of different people that we work with. All right, Marion, if you want to go ahead and advance it one more. All right. And so to just dive briefly into the components of the needs assessment and the type of analysis that we went out to do. The first one was what we're kind of calling a community data review. And this involved a period of basically data discovery in which we attempted to determine how many different data sources there were available in the community that looked into or were utilized by providers, providing services to individuals experiencing homelessness. And then we worked with those service providers to collect that information to try and create as clear a picture as we could or as accurate a picture as we could of the entirety of the population experiencing homelessness in Lawrence and Douglas County and to really understand what were the key components of that population and how could we best understand the needs of the population from that data. The next component were what we're calling community conversations. And this is where we actually had conversations with the local service providers and advocates to sort of gather their perspectives on the community and the current system that both, I guess, both alleviates but also contributes to homelessness. What is it about the system that is helping individuals transition out of homelessness and into housing? But what are some of the barriers within that system that can continue to contribute to individuals not being able to become housed? Information was also gathered on how each of those organizations sort of interacts with the other organizations or within that system and with the community and sort of what their impact is that they're trying to make on homelessness because each organization offers slightly different services. And we really wanted to understand, well, what is it that they are attempting to do to really work on this issue of homelessness in Lawrence and Douglas County? And then finally, I think one of the key components of this particular needs assessment is we had interviews and conversations with individuals who actually have lived experience with homelessness. So individuals who either were currently experiencing homelessness or have recently experienced homelessness. And so we conducted some semi-structured interviews using a grounded theory approach to better understand those experiencing chronic homelessness and particularly those who are involved in services in Lawrence and Douglas County and sort of what their perspective was on what worked went well, what could work better and what were some suggestions that they might have to really sort of boost the ability to move from homelessness into housing. We really geared these to understand strategies from their point of view for those who are experiencing homelessness to really understand what could we make as far as suggestions to leaders, policymakers, and then also the research community at large. What can we take from their experience that can move this system forward and create the type of change that we're hoping to find? And then finally, there were limitations. Anytime that you're working sort of in the real world, there's going to be limitations on the types of data that you can collect. So not surprisingly, we found that there was, you know, some fragmented data collection and fragmented data systems, which limited some of the scope of what we could say because we made it de-duplication of individuals experiencing homelessness is very difficult. Many service groups had their own data collection systems, which then meant that folks would be served across those service organizations and hard to disentangle those individuals. Also, there's also differing definitions of homelessness that are used by various federal agencies for sure, but also local agencies as well. So HUD uses a more strict definition of homelessness than do others such as the Department of Education. That makes it more difficult to define specifically what individuals are experiencing homelessness when it comes to specific agencies and organizations. And then finally, we're also working with a population that's often invisible. Individuals who are experiencing homelessness come in all sort of varieties. Some folks are more visible than others. But unless you were hit one of those data systems, it's hard for us to actually find out, find you as an individual experiencing homelessness and be able to sort of talk to your experience. And so those are just some of the limitations I wanted to get out there as we move in to talking a little bit about the findings and considerations that we came up with while doing this, this project. So just wanted to put that out there. I should also note that I know that a previous version of an interim report or preliminary report was passed around. I do want you to know that not a finished product. There is a lot more that is still being worked on, on that, in particular around those conversations with individuals with lived experience. So we really just wanted to provide that as a way to provide you just a little bit extra background when we get to that question-answer session here coming up soon. All right, Marion, if you wouldn't mind advancing a slide. Okay. So I think next what we want to do is sort of focus on the needs assessment work and sort of talk through some findings fairly quickly. The first several slides, I think I'm going to move through somewhat quickly just because I think a little bit more information about those is actually contained in that preliminary report. So if you've had a chance to look at that over a little bit, you'll get sort of some of that more, more of that information from what we have here. I'm going to sort of try and pause and illuminate when we have additional information that comes from those individuals with lived experience to sort of add to the, what was in that initial preliminary report. But I do want to get to this question-answer session so we can really do the best version of the study session that we can and really allow you all to ask us questions about things that might be of interest to you. So Marion, if you want to advance one more slide for me, thank you very much. All right. This first one, I don't think is going to come to, as a large surprise to many people on this, in this particular meeting. And that is basically that currently the housing options in Lawrence and Douglas County do not meet the needs of the community at large, but in specifically of the population of individuals who are experiencing homelessness or are at risk of experiencing homelessness. And we saw this in multiple forms of analysis during this project and we understand that there are, there are many different factors that go into this particular finding and that play into housing difficulties. Housing affordability in the community remains a deep concern and one that can make it difficult for homeless individuals or newly homeless individuals or people at risk of homelessness, of transitioning out of homelessness and finding housing. And in fact, every stakeholder that we talked to spoke of this as one of the main needed resources in the community, which is affordable housing and when ways that we can get individuals who are experiencing homelessness into the affordable housing. The other key element here is beyond just the fact that there's a lack of affordable housing is that when affordable housing is able to be found and targeted, we really need to be able to be able to get individuals into those units. So the community could not only use additional supports for individuals to obtain rental assistance to allow them to afford housing, but we also need additional avenues to use that assistance. And what I mean here is that we need individuals to be able to take advantage of rental assistance and have that be accepted by landlords when trying to rent. We have a lack of, there are, I would, I don't want to paint with a broad brush here. There are landlords who do accept rental assistance in the community, but we need more of that to take place to really target those individuals who are experiencing homelessness or certainly those individuals also at risk of experiencing homelessness. And so landlord willingness to accept rental assistance and sort of lack of affordable housing and lack of ability to use or to gain rental assistance are intertwined issues and sort of both of them need attention if we're actually going to change this system. We need people to be more easily able to access rental assistance and we need them to be more easily able to use that rental assistance when it is accessed. And so we recognize that that's not an easy or simple problem to solve, but both of those need to be thought through when it comes to really targeting interventions for this that can sort of provide solutions for this group. We also, though, did find even smaller scale housing issues can have an important impact for folks. So a lot of individuals that we talked to, both service providers and individuals with lived experience, expressed their desire to find rentals that would be able to either bundle utilities together in that, in their rent or to have all the utilities bundled separately, but in one sort of package. This really eliminates a lot of anxiety and concern and really decreases some of the initial burdens for folks transitioning into housing from not being housed. One of the things that they expressed often was that it moving into a housed state brings with it a lot of new responsibilities that you're not necessarily aware of or haven't had to take care of in a long time. To the extent that we can mitigate or sort of minimize some of those, it would be very helpful for them as far as continuing to remain housed. All right, Marion, would you like to move forward one more for me? Thank you very much. This one is a, sort of was touched on in one of the limitations and that is that we actually really need a more complete picture of the population experiencing homelessness. We rely heavily in this particular report on HMIS data. So that's the homelessness management information system data. And that is information that is collected primarily through HUD-funded information system on individuals receiving services that are HUD-funded. And so it's good at capturing those individuals. It's quite good at that. And so folks who frequently have interactions with homeless response system, in particular HUD-funded agencies, easily sort of migrate into this system. But it struggles to include individuals who do not meet that definition or who are receiving services from other organizations who might not be HUD-funded or who aren't participating in HMIS. The problem here is that really gives us an incomplete picture of homelessness across the community. And that sort of prevents us from understanding all of the needs and really being able to target interventions across the community because we don't have that complete picture of homelessness and the individuals who are experiencing it. This is particularly true for populations that we would consider, you know, quote invisible homeless individuals. And so those are folks who don't meet that HUD definition, certainly people who might be considered doubled up, which is not part of the HUD definition for homelessness. And that could include populations, especially the youth or children populations are often ones that we see as a doubled up population. And so we really might not have an accurate depiction or picture of those individuals and their experience of homelessness in the community and just how many of those individuals are. So it makes it difficult to target the amount of resources or the types of resources to those groups. And this is going to be one of the reasons you'll see a future upcoming consideration around collaboration, but this is especially key currently so that all parties involved can bring information about their clientele to the table. So when we get to collaboration, this is another reason that it's going to be important is because of the way that the data system is currently working across the community. Right, Marion, if you'd advance one more for me? Okay. Couple ones here that we're going to talk about in terms of equity. And what we found from the data and then from some of the conversations amongst community members is that homelessness does present an equity problem to the community. What we know from the data available is that minorities make up a more significant portion of those experiencing homelessness than they do in the general population. In particular, you can see two groups here. African-Americans are represented five times higher in the homeless, than the population of people experiencing homelessness than they are in the general population. In addition, indigenous individuals make up somewhere between three to four times higher in the homeless population than they do in the general population. This is another population, the indigenous population that I want to point out. We had a lot of conversations with folks who say this is a group that in particular also experiences forms of invisible homelessness. And this number may actually be higher than what it is here using simply the HMIS system that we're able to access for this particular data. So I should also say, we did also find that Latino and Latinx individuals were also made up a significant portion of population experiencing homelessness than they did the general population. So across various minority groups, we are seeing this tendency for them experiencing homelessness much more frequently than they do sort of exist in that general population. I would also like to point out, just on this particular slide, that this is something that HUD itself is actually beginning to target. So just last month, they put out, I believe, their first ever Equity Action Plan. And it's, which is a focus on advancing equity and in particular in equity and its delivery of homelessness assistance programs. And one of the components of this plan is they're going to do a review of their policies that pose barriers to housing for persons with criminal histories or criminal histories in their families. And so this is one of the ways that they're sort of keying in on how do we start thinking through equity? In particular, how do we look at homelessness and the inequities within homelessness? And what are the factors that might lead to those? So one of the ones they've keyed in on is there are some requirements in being able to receive vouchers or housing or rental assistance via HUD that focus in on not having a criminal history or having a family member with criminal history. What they're seeing is or reviewing is how that policy might implicate populations of color more than implicates other populations. So it's something that we should be aware of as a community. And I think it's a good way to sort of start framing about how we look at other policies that we might have that also perpetuate inequity when it comes to homelessness in the community. So wanted to call that one out specifically here. Marion, if you'd advance again for me. Thank you very much. The other interesting finding that we came across when looking at the population experiencing homelessness is that in Lawrence and Douglas County, we see a different trend when it comes to gender and homelessness than we do in other areas than we do across the nation, basically. In fact, both at the national and state level, we see a much smaller percentage of females in the homeless population than we do in Lawrence and Douglas County. In Lawrence, we see over 50% of the individuals that we have in the system as identifying as female, whereas in Kansas and nationally, when you look at that information, what you're seeing is actually somewhere around in the upper 30s when it comes to individuals experiencing homelessness identifying as female. We're not 100, to be honest, we're not 100 totally sure what's driving this particular factor, but it's certainly something we're interested in having investigated more fully. What I should know is that in our conversations with service providers, they say that this isn't like an anomaly or a new factoid from the data that we got for the year that we participated in the needs assessment. This has been something that has sort of been the way that the gender breakdown happens in Lawrence and Douglas County for a while. So it's something to certainly continually to pursue. Not causal or anything, but we did hear from some of the individuals that we talked with that Lawrence and Douglas County do have quality domestic violence services and that potentially other communities around Lawrence and Douglas County have less available quality services and potentially this might be a factor that leads individuals in Lawrence, Douglas County, leads Lawrence, Douglas County to have more individuals experiencing homelessness that are identifying as females. So I would just throw that out there as some, I guess, thoughts that other folks had about why we might be seeing this discrepancy from national trends. All right, Marion, if you'd advance again for me? Okay. This one, this one I hinted at earlier, sort of collaboration. We think based on what we have seen from the work that's going on in Lawrence and Douglas County, that collaboration is going to be basically going to be critical to systems change and the goal of ending homelessness in the community. We just already previously mentioned the data segmentation and data collection in the community. And they need for increased collaboration to alleviate the issues that arise because of data segmentation. I want to say that this is going to become increasingly important when we start talking about coordinated, the coordinated entry system and the by-name list. So essentially what the by-name list is essentially a list, what it's intended to be is a list of all individuals in the community who are experiencing homelessness. And then it allows that to be used to target services, intervention and housing to those individuals. Without an accurate list or with continued compartmentalization, it is difficult to, if it's difficult to get everyone on that list. And if everyone's not on that list, it becomes even more difficult to provide the services that those individuals need. So essentially what we are saying is that the community needs everyone providing services and support to come to the table and participate. Without collaboration, that system can get bogged down with inefficiencies because providers are potentially providing redundant services or having to ask for redundant information from the clients that they're trying to serve. And you aren't really able to understand what services are taking place, where, who's receiving what and just limits their ability to best serve the clients. But perhaps most importantly, it really creates a disjointed and confusing system for the individuals who are experiencing homelessness. They're forced to try to navigate the system that itself isn't connected and just provides them one more roadblock to being able to move through that system and hit their end goal, obviously, of being housed. So collaboration is going to be immensely important. I know that many things are underway in the community and I think that they're great, but we really need to make sure that everyone is on board and at the table when it comes to those various initiatives and really getting together to collaborate around service provision to individuals experiencing homelessness. All right. Go ahead and advance, Marion. Okay. So permanent supportive housing options are needed in the community. What we have seen and discovered is that currently there are few, if any, real primitive supportive housing options in the community. Corporation Supportive Housing already presented and did some great work on this particular topic, really diving deep into permanent supportive housing and how many units might be needed within Lawrence and Douglas County. Through our work, we sort of earmarked approximately 150 individuals who would benefit from permanent supportive housing. Many of these are individuals who are either cyclically homeless or are experiencing chronic homelessness. I should note, our methodology is slightly different than the Corporation for Supportive Housing. We did a look at a slightly different timeframe of data. So we looked at basically an entirety, entire year of data. Corporation Supportive Housing did a slightly smaller look to really zone in on what is the current right now need for permanent supportive housing. But even with that, they earmarked 115 units of supportive housing needed for individuals experiencing homelessness and housing instability, as well as additional 39 units needed for folks who are entering, re-entering from the justice system. So these are individuals who might overlap with those ones that we sort of saw as needing permanent supportive housing as well. And so I think what we really want to talk about there and pause on is really the need to sort of prioritize supportive housing for individuals experiencing homelessness and its ability to sort of reduce homelessness in the community. We understand that because of the nature of affirmative supportive housing, it's not a quick solution. It's going to take time to build to those types of numbers that have been discussed. And because that's the case, we also need to have other sort of intermediate or immediate options available to sort of ease that transition to when we actually can have more permanent supportive housing options available for individuals experiencing homelessness in the community. All right, Marion, please. Thank you. Okay. Next, we're going to turn our attention and our discussion more specifically to what we learned from individuals with lived experience and homelessness. And these are sort of the interviews and we're going to try and focus on things that sort of help us fill in some of the gaps about the experience of homelessness that the data really can't touch on and that service providers probably only have limited access to when it comes to talking about their experiences with folks that are homeless. And so we did a host of interviews with individuals with lived experience in homelessness. And I should note, we do have some quotes that are going to be on the next several slides. All quotes are, all quotes have a pseudonym used for interview confidentiality. But we did want to put a name to personalize the quote to make sure that it's sort of really impactful. And we did think that these were quotes that were indicative of some of the, some of what we were hearing around these primary themes. And the sort of the primary themes that we sort of seen from this first initial coding of the information, we came around with sort of perceptions of homes. So we asked individuals with lived experience to tell us about the places that they live we came around with sort of perceptions of home. So we asked individuals with lived experience to tell us about the places that they live or places that they would consider home. And throughout each conversation, we learned about how people experiencing homelessness perceive what makes space feel like home and share insights on the idea of their ideal home, but also tell us a little bit about like what types of situations do they find unacceptable? What is, where can we meet them and help them most feel at home? Now, next, we talked a little bit about quality social supports. And through our conversations, interviewees discussed many elements of social supports that helped them either access resources or would help them ask access resources and really about the ability, the need to meet their basic needs. So their ability to meet their basic needs was one of those things that they really looked for when it came to social support. And finally, we talked just a little bit about what pieces of wisdom that they were able to share with us. So they had many insights to share about how community leaders, service providers, decision makers, even just the community at large could support individuals who are houseless and improve the community response to prevent and end homelessness. So what could we take away from what they were telling us that really might be able to move the ball forward? Might be actionable items that we could use to really work toward ending homelessness in the community. All right, Marion, if you'd advance for me. All right, so perceptions of home, excuse me. And this really does go just beyond housing, sort of it helps, they help to articulate what feels safe, sustainable. They talked about how housing and home are different. Every person articulated details that make place a place feel like home. And one of the nice things about this conversation was it really gives them opportunity to dream out loud. What is it like? What is your ideal version of what home could be? And what is the next steps to get you into housing and what does that look like? And to be honest, a lot of them were fairly basic things that really make homes or houses feel like home, the ability to cook your own meals, ability to make small scale decisions. Maybe it's painting a bedroom wall, maybe it's something else, but some of those small scale things really do make a place feel home. But far and away, we did have a lot of interviewees who talked about this need when you're homelessness to always have to feel like you need to be hyper vigilant. They talked about home being a place where you don't have to feel like you're constantly on guard just to ensure your safety or to ensure the safety of your belongings. It's a place where you can stay that is private and secure, where they can feel like they can relax and be themselves. They talk about home being a place safe from like violence, like I said, your belongings being stolen. And what they really brought forth was this constant need to feel hyper vigilance, this idea that you always have to be thinking about your personal safety or the safety of your stuff really affects all your other interactions and decisions throughout a day. It really provides a lot of stress when you're trying to think through what your next steps are. If you have to constantly think, well, where is my stuff? How do I make sure that I have the things that I need to function daily? It really just provides a lot of additional barriers to moving through the system, taking the next steps that you think or know will get you on the right pathway to being housed. So hyper vigilance is something that came out a lot when we people talked about home, it's a place where they can let that go. And that's something that they really thought would be important. And as I said, a place to, excuse me, to really meet the basic needs. And this is was shared in a couple of different ways, but also the idea that you can have a modest home where you can slowly start to incrementally meet your own goals and your own needs. And so it's having supports along the way. So the perceptions of home for them was not extravagant, but it's something where they could start to feel exerted control over their life and inability to move forward in their goals. All right, if you wouldn't mind moving forward, Marion. All right, quality support. So this is really one where our participants described that when service providers and the staff had the appropriate conditions for support, they really were in Lawrence able to provide genuine care for others. So by and large, the interviewees talked about staff in Lawrence being able to provide care that met their needs. And really being able to sort of what they said is a model genuine care that provided sort of like a family like feel in the support that was given. And they appreciated that because some of them mentioned that this is a modeling of personal and felt care that has not always been present in their in their families previously. And it was a way for them to really feel like other folks that cared for them. They really appreciated the people who get it. And this is often folks who may have had experience themselves with homelessness and are able to provide care that understands this person's journey and where they're at within the experience of homelessness homelessness in the community. They also mentioned, and this is one that I thought was very interesting. They themselves mentioned that they can see the strain on the workforce that is providing services throughout the community. They say they're doing their best, but right? And so this really got to the fact that they can see that sometimes it seems like these providers have high caseloads and it's difficult for them to invest as fully as they might be able to in providing that genuine care that we talked a little bit about. And this led to a feeling of sort of like a luck of the draw sometimes. Sometimes you might catch a provider when they are able to provide services more fully, but sometimes, you know, depending on the circumstances, maybe your provider is a little bit more checked out. Not because it's not that they want, don't want to provide quality services, but because they are, they are swamped with with other you know, workforce issues as well. So you know, this is in a way that for them really talking about having empathy with the folks who are providing services to them. And so I really appreciated a little bit of that information being shared with us just about their quality support and what it feels like to have quality support. And they did share and we'll have more of it in the final report about what that quality support looks like as well. So I think that this was a really interesting finding from those individuals with experience. Marion, if you wouldn't mind. And then just to share a little bit of the wisdom that was that came from the homeless community that we talked with. Because we learned a lot and we continue to learn a lot as we continue to do the analysis on the information that they that they shared with us. So they talked a lot about the importance of investing in workforce. So investing in the service providers that provide those services to the individuals with experiences homelessness. They, by and large, they said they were, it was great, but they noted, but you know, but they noted that caseloads seem to be a problem occasionally. One of the things that they talked about was really individuals that provide services when they can provide functional supports, it's very important for them. So all of the participants discuss the importance of being able to, of having individuals help them be able to get government identification or other documentation. And those who are successful at obtaining those documents know that it was due to having staff who could provide significant individualized support when it came to that because it's they described as a sort of a difficult process. And sort of it's varied and specific to person based on the type of support and the type of documentation that they might need. So having individuals who could provide that type of support was very important to these individuals. They also talked about the need for more crisis mental health supports. And this showed up in a couple of different ways, one of which is that they noted that oftentimes when folks are in crisis, one of the first touch points that they have is with first responders and it's this can sometimes exacerbate the situation. And that perhaps if there were more mental how crisis health supports in the form of individuals trained in mental health support that could intervene prior to interactions with the police department or other first responders. This might lead to better outcomes for those individuals. We did hear from other individuals in the community who don't have mental health needs that they often felt that it can be, it can be a safety concern sometimes for folks who are in crisis. And so having folks who understand how to best deal and de-escalate those situations would really help sort of I guess alleviate some of the barriers to service or some of the negative impacts of interactions that occur because of I guess first responders and the need to alleviate what that might mean. But moving into sort of some other of the more pertinent and exciting advice, just wanting avenues to experience joy. They really talked a little bit about, again, this goes back to some of the hyper vigilance and sort of not and always being on guard. But the times where they able are where they really are able to experience joy are ones that they really sort of brought out to us and talked a lot about. And so they talked a lot about being able to just have these, these, these small moments where they can sort of check in to whatever gives them joy. So they previously like they mentioned cooking. One person mentioned doing puzzles, mind puzzles on his phone was a way for him to get out mentally of some of those situations and really check into something that provided him joy. And then one other just sort of piece of practical advice that gets to that hyper vigilant piece was just a they talked about a place to keep their things, a secure place where they can store their property, where they don't have to worry about it being taken. And that would alleviate some of those stresses. So that was another sort of piece of advice. And there's, there's a bunch of others that we can get into, but there's a bunch of others that will also be included, obviously in the final report, but we just wanted to hit on a few of those findings. And I've gone a little bit over the time that I had hoped to, but I we have just a couple more slides before we get to the questions. And so Marion, if you'd advance one more for me. So this is what we really want to focus on in Lawrence and Douglas County. And that is breaking the cycle of homelessness. And so this is sort of our depiction of that cycle of homelessness. And we know that housing and insecurities persist do inconsistent inefficient offerings of support. And so and when those supports come and then when they might be taken away, right? So what this visual is trying to depict here is that oftentimes individuals experiencing homeless experience homelessness. And then when they are able to navigate the system with the help of providers, they get an influx of supports. And maybe they're able to secure housing, but those supports can then sometimes wane. And then when that happens, sometimes it they slip back into homelessness and this sort of the the cycle perpetuates itself. They slip back into homelessness, then eventually they again are connected to service providers, some more supports emerge and they're able to stabilize themselves again for a little while. Marion, if you'd take one more slide for me here. And so what we're really looking forward, we're looking toward is really how do we try to break that cycle by providing sort of consistent supports? And the way we can do that is consistent wraparound supportive care to those who struggle with permanent housing in Lawrence and Douglas County. This gets back a little bit to that permanent supportive housing slide previously, but it really is all those factors that come into play when individual it needs assistance. And so it could be financial assistance, it could be mental health resources. It could be employment support. People talked about childcare access being something that contributed to their homelessness. It's really could be all of those things, but it's really understanding the supports needed at the individual level for each in each person to really make sure that we provide the assistance that's going to get them on the pathway to ending that cycle of homelessness. And I want to advance a slide real quickly to say that we do know that some of these initiatives are underway. We have just listed several of them here. There's many more that will be catalogued in the final report. But we wanted to sort of highlight a couple of them here that are sort of underway underway right now. We mentioned previously that we know that landlords are going to be key to some of this work. I, we also know that there are reach, there is reach out right now and engagement around landlords to try and sort of bring them to the table. I know that multiple organizations are doing that truly try and understand, try and help them understand, working with that particular population. And then a couple of other sort of pilot programs and initiatives that are underway there. And then I am going to go ahead and advance Marion, which I think takes me to our next step slide, which is we need to finalize those qualitative interview analysis and finish out the write-up of that. We also are going to gather feedback from this presentation. So we'll be interested to sort of hear your take and the questions that you might have. And then we're going to finish and find and wrap up our final report and then disseminate that out. And hopefully that is then able to provide additional information to the community that they can use when working toward ending homelessness. I should say, we, at least I personally, plan on sticking around as well. So continuing to go to the stakeholder meetings and understanding how this needs assessment might help move the work that they're doing there forward. All right, and I think the last one is just to say a big thank you to the commission and literally everyone who helped us put together this needs assessment and presentation. And I would be remiss if I didn't give my biggest thanks to the individuals with lived experience who really helped inform all the work that we did here. So with that, there's our emails. If you ever need to get ahold of us, that's the best way to do it. And I think I'll pause. I'm going to take a drink of water, but get ready for as many questions as you can throw at us.
Thank you so much, Owen. This Commissioner Reed, I really appreciate this overview and have been eagerly awaiting it and excited to see the final report. One question that's top of mind for me is you spoke a lot about the the different definitions of homelessness and really, and in my experience that the HUD definitions, as you mentioned, are very kind of rigid and explicit. And then there are things that you referenced like invisible homelessness and things that are harder to quantify. Can you speak to which agencies that you interviewed or collected data from that maybe weren't relying on those HUD specific definitions? And then I guess to go along with that, also agencies or organizations that are doing different data tracking that was either not HMS or for any reason kind of, I guess, difficult for you to aggregate and quantify?
Sure, I will. Let me start with some of the definition pieces. I agree with you HUD definition is more strict than than I care for. I prefer the US Department of Education. They, to the extent that they can, get a little bit closer to some of that invisible homelessness. So when they track students, which they're required to do as housing status, they also include doubled up and like hotel and motel stays as homeless. And so I do think there are many of the agencies in the in Lawrence Douglas County community that track and would consider homelessness in that way, right? So they would have more, they would collect more of the invisible homelessness, if you will. As far as data collection, the data collection component of it, part of this problem is that it HUD forms the definitions for HMS. Now HMS could potentially allow other data entry for other organizations into it. But there's also the component of how much duplication of data entry is going to need to take place from those agencies. And so I understand that's also a real concern because they often have their own data collection systems and then need to feed information into that as well. So the reason that it becomes difficult to aggregate, and I just to be honest, from our standpoint, one of the reasons is because you know, we aren't getting identifiable information, nor did we want to about individuals. So we can't deduplicate or disaggregate across those systems. If we had data sharing agreements with everyone in the community in the universe, then we could actually potentially attempt to do that. But this is a vulnerable population and we didn't think that was a responsible way to do this particular needs assessment. So I don't know that there was any, I wouldn't say that any particular agency's data system or data collection was better or worse or more or less frustrating. It was really just the way that the process needed to unfold that created some of those issues with data.
If I could speak to the the data question.
Sure.
I've got some information that might be able to help illuminate some of that. So yeah, absolutely. What Owen's saying there is correct. You know, anybody who is currently utilizing HUD funds is required to use HMS for those programs. And that's a very centralized kind of data system for everyone to set there's no, there's no duplication of services and such. However, the currently we don't have a lot of access for non HUD funded agencies to utilize HMS. And in addition, you know, everybody's got their own data requirements that they are gathering data for. And that means having to use two different systems to follow the same data. But that is something that KSHC is working on is is getting non HUD funded agencies access to HMS that they can tailor HMS our HMS system to their programs so that we can get a lot more accurate data. A great example, and I only know this because A great example, and I only know this because I've spent 14 years with Burt Nash. You know, Burt Nash has like two different homeless programs, well, three now with the ACT. But they had their PATH team and then the city outreach team. And PATH is HUD funded, so they have to use HMIS. So all of their data is going into HMIS. Meanwhile, the city team is not HUD funded, it's funded by the city. And so therefore that data isn't all making it into HMIS. They have to gather it on a spreadsheet in Excel and then, you know, that way they can gather the data points, the city ones for them. And the hope is, is that within this year, within 2022, we will have a lot more of these non HUD funded agencies or non HUD funded programs entering that data into HMIS and give us a more complete data picture.
Thank you, David. That helps a lot. I really appreciate that. Sort of status update and the challenges with trying to centralize all of that information. I might have more questions, but want to open it up for other commissioners.
Thank you for sharing this information. This Commissioner Kelly, and I'm interested in, you recognize that landlords taking advantage of rental assistance was a limitation that we see in the system. In your community conversations, did you talk with landlords about what are the barriers to using that rental assistance?
Yeah. So we did not have direct conversations with landlords outside of, if you think about the, the housing authority as a landlord as well. But they are, they and other providers are having those conversations with landlord as they try to get clients into those rentals. And there's, there's a couple of things that are, that are usually mentioned. Using HUD vouchers does come with some regulation and administrative burden that the landlord will, needs to, to go through to, to, to use those. So that is certainly one of them. Other, and so this is not coming directly from a landlord. So other things that were shared with us though are, you know, Lawrence is a, is a college community. And there is a plethora of individuals looking to rent housing units at any specific time. And those individuals often have sort of other advantages in place that make them easier to rent to. They, some folks may have a, the ability to have other people co-sign for them. And I think that is sort of one of the other issues that we see with landlords is that there's, there's just a lot of individuals looking to rent that provide just an easier population to rent to, is what I would say.
Maybe that's an opportunity to invite Matthew and Shannon who are here in, into that conversation and David as well to hear as you work with landlords. You know, what are you hearing? And we've heard conversations or public comment about right to counsel and evictions. And I'm just interested to hear from your perspective as we try to work with landlords to solve this. You know, what impacts might giving people right to counsel have in our relationships with landlords?
Yeah, I know some about this topic. So this is Shannon Howery, Housing Authority. So you know the slide they had where it talked, where it showed people sort of cycling out of homelessness into houses, back into homelessness? What happens is that's getting into that second house is 10 times as hard. Because what happens is a lot of landlords are going to run a credit check or they're going to run, you know, some kind of check. And if you've been evicted or you've damaged other units. Or another big problem that Owen kind of touched on, but really didn't fully explain is you left that unit with a lot of unpaid utilities. Those follow you, right? And you can't get utilities turned on in the new unit until you pay sometimes thousands of dollars in back owed utilities. So that second house gets 10 times harder to get for, you know, for this population, for a homeless population, particularly when they cycle out. And a lot of times also what happens is we lose that landlord, not just for that particular tenant, but for other tenants. And so, you know, we have the landlord liaison program. We got ESG funds for it. We're putting our own money into it because the recruiting of landlords is so much more important. The harder it gets to use the voucher. And, and that having guarantor sign is a big deal. Lots of, you know, several of us I know have had college students and we signed some of those. And so it makes it a lot less competitive to try to get in there. And yes, the, the unit has to pass what we call HQS. And sometimes, you know, we end up on that weird part, part of the spectrum that a unit that a college student doesn't want that we might be able to get into. Let's say it's older, more distressed, it won't pass our HQS. And so it's a multifaceted problem. And it just, and, and a lot of the landlords, you know, we had a lot of the eviction protection. But then all the landlord side of it was their mortgage was still due also. And so some of the, I mean, I mean, you know, Matthew can attest to this. Some of the population is very hard to house. It's hard for the housing authority. It's hard for Burt Nash. A private landlord is not prepared to deal with some of the substance use and mental health issues that, that some of the population face. And so when we, you know, we have all these vouchers, but the voucher is only as good as a landlord. And when you come with all of those other issues, finding a landlord very hard.
Shannon, may I ask you to define some of the acronyms? Cause I know that we're going to have quite a few folks who want to hear this and listen to this and engage in this conversation. And I heard you say ESG funds, some HQS when it comes to.
Yeah. ESG is emergency services grants. And HQS is the housing quality standard.
Thank you. Also, I think that Commissioner Kelly asked a bit about the conversation that we're having about right to counsel when it comes to eviction and how that, how that might. I'm going to just extend your question a little bit more because I think your question was very focused on how that might impact our relationship with landlords overall. But I think it also kind of goes back to what you were talking about when it comes to getting into that second house is 10 times as hard. So I think there are kind of two pieces of this. The right to counsel may help folks stay in a house, but it may also make it harder for us to develop some of those long-term relationships with landlords. How do we balance that? How should we be thinking about this program? What are things that we haven't thought about when it comes to keeping folks housed and also building relationships with landlords in our community?
So the first thing I'd say about the eviction process is it's so much better if you can avoid getting there. And the way the, I mean, the way the limited action docket works is if you file an eviction by Wednesday, you get a hearing by a week and a half later on Friday and they're all sat on Fridays. And 80% don't show up. Okay. Of the tenants don't show up. But the problem is even if they showed up, if they didn't pay rent, the landlord is entitled to an eviction. There is no excuse. There is nothing in the statute that says, I got laid off, so I couldn't pay rent. So that would be an exception. There is no exception in the statute. The judges will have no choice but to follow the eviction if they didn't pay rent. So a lot of times the best place to have counsel is on the answer date. And where you could go and negotiate with the landlord, how to resolve the situation as opposed to trying to get it into the eviction trial. That's the best place to go. And, and like I said, it's better if you don't get there. You know, and, and, and the housing authority, when we see something going that way, we try to get these mutual agreements. They'll get people out of these leases before they get an eviction on their record. But, but once it gets, if rent was not paid, the judges have no choice but to grant the eviction.
This Commissioner Reed, I appreciate that. I'm, I'm, you're absolutely right that state statute in Kansas provides a pretty fast track to eviction once a filing happens and pretty clear and definitive reasons that people can be evicted. I think what you mentioned about, I mean, having right to counsel at that answer docket for folks who, who do get that to that space is critical because the goal would then be to negotiate for more time and to negotiate for ultimately a dismissal for resolution because we know that so many evictions get filed. The person's response to that, because it's a crisis situation, right? Is to just figure out what their next move is, not show up to court for a million and one reasons. Not get any legal advice because there is no access to it. That eviction is then on their record and is definitive and follows them and all the things we've talked about, right? And so I, that feels like a really big and necessary piece to help break that cyclical nature of things. And I also, I wondered if you can speak, Shannon, with the vouchers? And we spoke a little bit about this recently in the City of Lawrence Affordable Housing Advisory Board Meeting. Kind of the, can you help illustrate how much of a loss of participating landlords and property owners, apartment complexes, larger, you know, not just folks that own one or two properties that might accept vouchers from you, but, but can you just illustrate a little bit over the past couple of years, like what a loss of participating landlords you've had?
Yeah. And that is a number we're actually trying to develop for you all because I think it's really important to. But I think the easy number is about 85 landlords that we've lost. But what that doesn't give you is the magnitude. In recent years, we've lost really big apartment complexes that maybe we had 25, 30 people with vouchers in. We've lost a trailer park. We, I mean, and, and so some of it is not just one landlord. It is when we lose somebody, we lose 25 people. And I mean, we've literally had, I mean, the, the other sort of, you know, sort of piece that people don't understand is that, yeah, eviction is a pretty streamlined process. But non-renewing is, there is no process. Every landlord basically has the right to say 30, 60 days before your lease expires. I am not renewing your lease. You'll need to be out. And that happened a lot. We had a real wave when we had the eviction moratorium on, we had a huge wave of non-renewals. We didn't have people evicting people. We had them non-renewing people. So then we have staff and we have an AmeriCorps and we have our landlord liaison. We have a lot of stuff trying to recruit landlords and actually working with our participants to try to find someone who will take the voucher. And when we get 20 or more, because this town is on that, you know, August to July cycle. So a lot of times when we get a big, a big apartment complex who's non-renewing everybody, everybody's in, back in the looking mode all at the same time. I mean, right now the housing authority, we have 63 vouchers on the street, people looking for units. It's going to be hard for all of them to find them.
I think it's important to understand that a lot of this challenge is the result of a lopsided dependence on the private market. Right? We're heavily dependent upon finding housing units for people only in the private market. I started live, working in Lawrence, the homeless population in 2005. And it was pretty easy at that time to find a unit, just a unit for $450 a month, right? I mean, the market has changed significantly since then. The vacancy rate at that time was 83, 85%. The vacancy rate today is, you know, maybe 3%, right? There's, you know, 98, 95% of units are occupied. That level of shift, including a shift in ownership of properties. There's been a significant shift away from private landlords. Some landlords have passed away. Some landlords have gotten out of the business. There's large corporations who've come in and acquired properties. And that is a, when you put that all together, just in respect to the private market, that has really strained accessibility in, in a system that didn't have a lot of other options. Not a lot of nonprofit housing ownership, tenants to homeowners trying to do some things. And there's other agencies trying to do some things to, to tip that balance. But when you think of the type of population that we're trying to serve, and I have a lot of sympathy with landlords in this respect, damages are a real thing, right? When, when you have someone who has a significant mental health issue and a significant substance use issue. And you have a strained workforce, we, you know, we can't be there every single day. It's hard to get there even multiple times a week to see somebody and help support them. Damages happen and significant damages happen. And for the housing market and, and I, it's hard to see what the future is going to bring with cost, but just in the last three years, the cost of damages significantly increases because of the cost of materials is going up, right? This, these are all things that are kind of snowballing over the last few years that further restrict private market access to housing for this population. So I, I don't see a way for us to, to really move forward with, with such a heavily reliant need in the private market. We have to diversify our portfolio of housing in the community. And, and that means also diversifying the type of housing they would offer, not, not just whether it's private or nonprofit, but what kind of housing it is. Those are real issues. I think to go along with right to counsel, something that may be a significant capacity issue or counterbalancing, maybe some of the negative effects of that are that when you catch people early, if that right to counsel also comes along with resources to help make landlords whole. So if there are damages, if there are unpaid rents, if there are unpaid utilities, that it's not just, all right landlord, what are you going to do to work with us? It's that we're actually offering you something to, to help make you whole. That may be something that would further access and more widely open access in the private market. But that shift over the last 15 years in the private market is extremely important for us to understand. And, and is really what frames the challenges that we're having today with housing in Lawrence and Douglas County.
Commissioner Reed, I really appreciate you illustrating that and think that it is important to understand we, I think it's become quite evident in recent years in particular that we cannot rely only on the private market and that there are a number of challenges, which you just, and pressures that you just highlighted that are out of the control of our, of our local governments, of our service providers, of our community. And so some alternative options, and I appreciate highlighting that part of the issue, you know, that whole trailer park that you mentioned, it is because of large, outside of our community corporations buying up real estate, which is not unique to our community. It's happening across the country and we are certainly feeling the impact of it because, yeah, and I'm 85-ish landlords maybe results in a lot more units. And so I just appreciate you all highlighting that. Did you have more, more questions?
I, I guess I just wanted, before we wrap up, we do have a 5:30 business session starting, so I want to make sure the commissioners have a break. Jill, I don't know if you or the CPPR team want to talk about next steps and kind of where we're headed from here?
Yeah. So like they mentioned, they've got some, some additional work to do on, to finalize the report. They are going to be presenting to the city commission the second Tuesday in June, which will be interesting to hear that feedback as well. And then we'll have a finalized report in hand probably towards the end of June that we'll, we'll provide to this group, to the commission. But how we take the fine, even what we've heard today the work of where do we go from here is going to happen within the homeless and housing stakeholder group. And I'm really looking to David and his counterpart at the city that was just hired, turning in as Jennifer Wolfie, to help continue to convene that group of stakeholders to craft a plan. to help continue to convene that group of stakeholders to craft a plan to take this information and create a short and long-term plan um with the relevant work groups. I think the findings of the Corporation for Supportive Housing um will be a part of that. Kind of a more specialized permanent supportive housing work group, but um we're just going to figure out how we can take this information and and truly operationalize it. Um, and I just want to also, I, you know, I have, I think one of the, their findings really identify some, they highlight efforts that are underway that um I I really have a lot of confidence in them continuing forward. And I think one of those is when you uh look at the the slide that was around collaboration and data sharing. One of the key tools that we have in our toolbox to help facilitate that is just having David in the full-time position that he's in. And bringing consistency and continued accountability to uh the coordinated entry process and asking questions like, how do we get access to the HMIS system for non HUD funded agencies? How do we have as many folks as possible participating, participating in coordinated entry as possible? Um, and then also continuing to just raise the key on, one of the bullet points on here that I want to keep talking about in coordinated entry and our stakeholders group, and that's collaboration and data sharing to best serve and prioritize. We're not having any success for a lot of really, for some really complicated folks in the community. And permanent support is a big goal in that, but also our, you know, our reentry population that Owen talked about. The CFA uh talked about that as well. Um, and then taking a a hard look at how our that our local systems are informing those racial and gender disparities. Um, I know David just came back from the Built for Zero um national learning session in Chicago this past week, and they did a really deep dive on how to implement, how to use a racial equity lens in your local homeless response system. So I'm really encouraged. Um, and we're just going to keep working on um how we can use this information. And we're happy to come back to you all with updates as we move forward.
I was just going to say, I really appreciate, this is Commissioner Portillo, I really appreciate what the next steps are going to be. And I'm wondering how the conversation from today will kind of filter into that final report, since I really see this final report as the centerpiece of how our community is going to have these conversations. And one thing that Shannon brought up that I think is incredibly important is just how in that cycle of getting into a second home after an eviction is so much harder. And I think it's really important for our community to understand that. And I wonder if there's a way that we can make sure that that's kind of highlighted in the report. And then I think some of these questions around right to counsel, it may just be helpful for folks to understand the legal process of eviction a bit more and what that process looks like and all of the pieces that come before it. So how we might think about legal interventions, not just at that point of a hearing, but what legal interventions might look like before that, so we could avoid hearings. I know that that may be slightly outside of the scope of a needs assessment, but some of this is just defining what processes look like so we can have clear conversations as a community. And so defining those processes would be really helpful as we move forward with community conversations.
Absolutely, Commissioner Portillo. Timing is really good. You can uh Gabby Sprague, our Human Services Program Manager, and Marielle Fierro, the uh landlord liaison with the Housing Authority, are scheduled to give you all an update on their efforts around landlord engagement, um rental assistance, and what kind of progress they've made in the one year that Marielle has been in that position. They're going to be coming to the commission for an update um in early June. And um so I think that is exactly what we we talked to Sarah about presenting to you all and continuing to chip away at what could we do locally to make progress.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, this Commissioner Reed again. I um just before we close, want to um share my deep appreciation for how intentional and thorough you were about um really centering folks with lived experience and really creating safe and conducive ways in order to gather that information. I just think it's so critical and in my opinion, perhaps as a biased service provider in this community, it is really, it's kind of the um heart of what we need to know and hear about to help us have some direction about tangible, practical solutions to really complex issues. So I just appreciate the care and intention that um you took through those interviews and incorporating that. I'm really looking forward to seeing more of that wisdom shared with us in the final report. So thank you, everybody, for your time and your efforts. Um, we'll talk to you again soon. Have a good evening. Uh, we will be adjourned until five-thirty for our business meeting.